I'd like to welcome you to the August 16th, 2023 City Council Meeting.
Yeah, Debbie's making comments.
Okay, I'll wait, hang on. Time out.
There's Debbie.
I said no.
I don't hear his head better either.
There's Chris. Do we get? Roll call. Dee Cregan, Jason Upchuck, Heather Newsome, Kevin Stapp. Naomi Diaz is absent. Community Service Director Roger Krieger, City Employees, City Attorney Chuck Zimmern, City Clerk Attorney Debbie Cregan. Can we get a motion to?
I'm going to make a motion to excuse.
All in favor?
Aye.
Like to ask you now to stand for the invocation and then remain standing for the pledging of allegiance.
Let's pray together. Father, thank you for our wonderful city. Thank you for these leaders. Thank you for these citizens and interested people who want to see a government that works well. And so we pray that we would work well. We pray that you give us wisdom and grace as we discuss these matters and that we would be an honor to you. We ask in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, for approval of gender, I would like to amend letter E authorizing the contact amendment of professional services. We can eliminate that.
Letter D?
E. Letter E.
Motion to approve as amended.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Next up, item five, approval of August 2nd, 2023 regular council meeting minutes. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Item six, interested citizens, oral communications, requesting comments from the audience on unrelated items. Ramp and Doll, is that say that right?
Yes.
You're up.
We would like to ask if the city pool would open again since it's been the hottest week this year and we've been there every day and our kids just love to swim and they've gotten better and better this year. And I've never seen that many people in the city pool as this year and we were just surprised and shocked from one day to the next that it was closed. And to hear that there would have been lifeguards, but it might have been too much paperwork to hire them for the last two weeks was just shocking to us that this was not be important enough for the city. So we would like to ask to open that again. Chris wants to say something?
Thank you. Amelia, step.
Hello, Mayor Tim. Please open the pool. My name is Amelia and I live in Deer Park. Please open the pool. This is the hottest week of summer. I feel sad about the pool being closed. I've been working on my swimming all summer, trying to pass the swim test, but now I can't practice in the pool. Please open the pool. Thank you.
Thank you, Amelia. We tried and we tried. We cannot staff it correctly, so next year hopefully we can come up with a different plan. So that's all I'm going to say about that. Next up, item seven, new business. Deer Park School, juicy growth in planning update. Eric Keller and Almond, you have the floor.
We are improvising. Good evening. I'm Alexa Almond, the excited, proud, and honored new superintendent of Deer Park School District and accompanied with Eric Keller this evening. So we're going to be true to education and improvise and show you like a book. And we'll do a picture walk of the presentation. So yes, we're going to improvise. So again, I'm Alexa Almond, the proud and honored new superintendent to serve Deer Park School District. So happy to be here.
And I'm Eric Keller and I'm the board chair this year for the school district.
And there's our introduction. And how to contact us if you need to contact us.
If you need to contact us, please go look at the website like every other thing in the world, look at the website and contact information.
And really just first and foremost, would like to thank Mayor Tim and our city council members for passing the resolution back in July, providing the land that can be available to us if the bond passes in February 2024 and supporting our growth and planning process as well. So wanted to acknowledge and say thank you very much to our city council members.
Yes, thank you very much. We say good communities mean good schools and vice versa, so we hope that you also get the scores.
So we really just wanted to take this time to highlight the growth in Deer Park, which I know you are all very well aware of. I heard it at previous city council meetings as well. Provide you an overview of the Deer Park School District Facilities Advisory Council and the work that we've done for the past two years in analyzing the growth. And then what we are going to be doing as a school district and what our plan is to acknowledge and be able to grow along with it, including our facilities. We have been involved in the planning process for the last two years. The Facilities Advisory Committee has been comprised of citizens, patrons, families, employees that have come together the past two years to analyze the growth. So we'll share a little bit about that information for you. And then they created priorities. They looked at our facilities and said, here's what we need to look at in conjunction with our growth and planning to make sure that we have safe and optimal learning spaces for our students.
And that process is an ongoing process. So we have a Citizens Advisory Council for facilities and we've been meeting for like 10 years and every time, we know we have a long list, just like at home, when we hit the top ones, like the middle school was one of our tops, we got that done. Now we're moving on to the next one and we'll keep recycling that list till we get things to the top so that we can do what's right for the kids with input from the communities.
No, I was just going to say, and I appreciate the work that the Facilities Advisory Committee has done to prepare us for growth. All right. So today is not only about sharing information with all of you in terms of the process, it's probably for some of you who have been present at our community forums, but it's also at the very end, it's going to give you a link if you have a smartphone or a smart device that you can engage in the thought exchange process, see what others have rated or thoughts that they've had, and then allows you to put in your own thoughts and ideas and raise the thoughts and ideas with others. So we're really out trying to get ideas, insights, input, and feedback from the community as to our plans because the community force is very important to us. It's very important to the board as we continue to look at future plans and make decisions going forward.
We always, we've had, Alexa's done a couple of community forums and a couple of just meet the superintendent things. So if you guys have time, it'd be great if you could come and meet the superintendent and let us know. For there's five board members, please talk to us, let us know, send us an email, whatever you have concerns about schools.
And Eric and I have been doing joint community forums this summer as well. So why are we planning for the future? Why are we here? We want to make sure that we have safe learning spaces for all of our students. We believe that our schools are our community and like Eric said, our schools are the strength of this community and the future of our community. We want to make sure that we protect our current investments and assets and that includes our students as our most important assets, but also our facilities as assets as well. We want to make sure that we covet the values of this community. And so Eric and I and the board have been out, we've been at Settlers Day, Clayton Brickyard Days, the market days, just really getting out, getting to know the community and make sure, making sure that the community knows us as well and really learning about the community and the small town feel that we want to continue to maintain here in Deer Park. And then of course, we're growing and our schools are out of space, so making sure that we're planning for that.
Yep. So I went to grade school down the street down there and I graduated from high school here and we, my wife and I both graduated from Deer Park. Then we moved away. We got, we were able to come back here and raise our kids and it was great. I wanted to be part of the schools and just so that they could have, you know, maybe be a little voice in their education. But we've never seen this much growth in Deer Park. I mean, it's crazy when you go, I mean, Brad went to school with me way a long time ago, it seems like, but I've never seen this much growth in the community. And with growth comes usually small, the facilities or the buildings that are being built are not top end houses, some are, but there's a lot of step in houses where it's, we're bringing families to the community, young families. Young families mean kids. Kids mean more kids in school hopefully and more, we need more space. We're just getting bigger. We just need to keep pace with the time.
And I would like to also acknowledge the Deer Park Board of Directors for being very fiscally conservative and responsible with the menus that we've had to allow us to be able to do a lot of the projects that you've seen done as of recent without asking the taxpayers for additional funds and money. So thank you to the Board of Directors for allowing us to do the projects that we've already been able to do, yet we are still in need of some more. This is the old Deer Park, back from the 1950s.
I think the picture's hanging out in the hallway.
And as you can see, we've definitely grown and we've changed since the 50s. So think about our current reality and where Deer Park is now and what are we going to look like 50 years from now? We see the growth happening currently and it's continuing to change. So I don't know if you can see this, and I know you guys don't have color, but this shows our current Deer Park and each of our schools. And actually when this was done by a drone before the new rules were set forth, but since then, we have new housing communities that would be shown in the current pictures of our, of our elementary schools, of our high school. So that's definitely changed. Also want to say publicly, thank you to those of you who back in 2008 approved the Deer Park High School bond. So you can see the old Deer Park High School and then the high school today and what it looks like. Well, that bond is going to be paid off in December 2024 and December 2025. So we have this opportunity to run a replacement bond this next February.
Not to raise taxes, but to keep taxes, their current, close to current things that allow us to build, keep the facilities going that we have plus add some extra to meet with all the kids because we have portables, right? Everybody's seen portables and portables are about half a million dollars apiece and they are not portable, folks. It takes a lot to put them in. You gotta put the infrastructure, all this water, power, put a foundation. I mean, they're not portable. Yeah, we can take them off the foundation, do all that stuff, but that's a sub cost like half a million bucks for each one of those. We would like to do better with the money, be a little more fiscally responsible for the long term, just like the high school, you know. I went to the old high school, actually went to both old high schools. Then we, you know, we rebuilt the one that we, that I graduated from. And if you haven't been in it, it looks like you're going to be there pretty soon, but please go take a chance. It's, it's busy almost every night of the week, on the weekends, everything. It's truly a community building. Anybody can use it, just if kids are involved, you get bumped. So if they want to have a volleyball tournament, you want to have family reunion, you get bumped. But yep.
And this next one is just worth celebrating and the fiscally responsible way that the school board has managed the finances and the money to date. They were able to complete phase three of Deer Park Middle School, that new addition, without asking the taxpayers for any additional dollars. So they used the funds and the money that they have without having to run another bond. So just demonstrating how fiscally responsible we are in the board of then. Thank you.
And it was great because the stars aligned and everything for the, we would have probably been able to do about half of what we did with the school, with the middle school, but the state matching funds kicked in at the right moment. We waited long enough and everything, so we were able to complete quite a bit more than we started at.
So thank you. The next couple of slides are just a brief overview of the plots of land that have already been purchased and are currently being developed, just to highlight and demonstrate, well, illustrate the growth that's happening in Deer Park currently. So there's two, three, four, five, and then the plot of land, which I know you can't see, but maybe you can see it on your PowerPoint slides that are being developed. I know you're well aware of the development that's happening in Deer Park. Currently more. So just a little bit of research back from 2014. Classroom physical environments do in fact affect student achievement. The facility's structural features, including inadequate lighting, noise, poor air quality and deficient heating can undermine learning. And then in terms of the classroom environment such as decor, that also influences student environment. And then evidence-based classroom design can maximize education outcomes for all students. So just a little bit of research around facilities and how they impact student learning and achievement. Okay. And then this next one actually talks about the Facilities Advisory Committee. Eric shared with you a little bit about the work that they've done, they've done over time to provide more highlights.
So like I said before, it's an ongoing committee that we have at school and there's, there's about 25 folks from all over the community. A couple of us board members are on there and then she's usually chaired by the superintendent. But we get together, we go around and we look at all the facilities, usually once a year, sometimes during that anyhow. And then we rank what needs to be done for the, for the future. One of the things that's high on our list right now, of course, is more school space because students come first. But we have a, our bus garage is 100 years old. It was willed or at least given to us for a dollar from Deer Park pine. It's the old lumber drying shed that they've used and it's literally sinking into the ground. So that's pretty high on our list for doing that, but kids come first and that's the thing. So we try and focus our money on that. That's why the bus garage still works out.
So just the Facilities Advisory promoted cost-effective planning, design, and renovation and construction of public school facilities, maintained citizen oversight because citizens were a part of the community on issues pertaining to the facilities and funding for school construction. And then the goal of the Facilities Advisory Committee is a lot to do, usually to address the growth and the school district's facility needs in a fiscally responsible and conservative manner.
And to be honest, the, I mean, we've seen the growth coming, but it's kind of like, poof, here it is and we're getting 700 billable or 800 billable spaces in the city. You know, that's a big thing that happened within the last five years. It's just kind of, it's hard to plan for that 15 years ago because I didn't, when we moved back, I didn't think it was going to happen, but here we are.
And we worked with a group called Flow Analytics that took a look at all the plots of land, the houses that were being built and did analysis of who is it that's coming into our area. And if you can see by the graph, the younger grades are growing rapidly. So as Eric mentioned, a lot of families with younger kids are coming in, so anticipating that growth over time. The high school age, at least for this next 10 years, it seems pretty steady because they're a smaller class size, but over time it will continue to remain steady.
Could you tell us the timeline? We couldn't quite see the timeline.
Oh, yes. So on the far left is 2016.
Okay.
The top, I don't know if you can see it here. Maybe I can actually walk around.
Yeah, we can tell what the lines are. I just, so 2016 through probably 2026 or 2023.
Yeah. 2031 is your last. But you can tell at the younger grades, which is where the priorities from the Facilities Advisory Committee really come in.
We tried to have a crystal ball and, you know, look at it and go, okay, we think 700 houses, 1.2 kids per house, whatever, it's going to come to here. But this really surprised me. I figured it would come just kind of linearly over the whole, all, all grades, but it's shown us that the high school is going to stay pretty stable for probably five or 10 years and then we'll pick up all the kids that are moving here into the upper levels. So we're planning down the road right now.
And what's nice is the high school has plenty of space, so they're not worried about space moving forward. So these were the capital projects priorities that the Facilities Advisory came up with. As Eric mentioned, number one, the transportation center, 90-plus years old. It is pretty dilapidated and I have actually pictures in here of the transportation center. So would like to imply, would like to provide the bus drivers with updated facilities and a space that is, has safe infrastructure as well. Secondly, Arcadia. The current Arcadia, which serves grades three through five, as Eric mentioned, is out of space. We have three portables, which equates to six classrooms. They are out of space, so students have to go outside and back and forth from outside to inside the, the main building. Portables come at a cost and that's just the cost to put them up, not to tear them down as well. We also have given up the cafeteria. It's now a classroom at the entryway, which impacts the gym space so the kids eat in the gym. Basically, we're also out of space in that teacher, we have a teacher this year that's going to be teaching from a cart, so roving from classroom to classroom. It's a specialist instead of being able to have his own classroom this year. So they are definitely tight. The next one.
When we have the portables out, they're the other thing that unfortunately we have to think about now is security of children. So they have to go outside and I guess when I was young, we were tougher, but you go outside and, you know, through the snow and whatever, and just security of kids and safety. I mean, we all see these things that happen all over and we don't, definitely don't want that to happen here. So it's one more reason that Arcadia is, it's a great school. We don't plan to tear it down. We don't plan to do anything with it except for re, repurpose it. And it's just not big enough and we can't add to it. It's like building on to your house, you know? If you just build a little bit every time, it doesn't function very well. And that's kind of where we're at with Arcadia. It's still good. It needs to be refurbished. It needs some new HVAC things, some new, maybe a new roof. I'm not sure why. But a bunch of those things, we just need more space. And we can't make, we can't make that work for the same price that we could make a better building work and build what we need instead of trying to make work.
And then of course, Deer Park Elementary, K2, as you see the growth with the younger kids to take a look at that. HomeLink, we serve a large growing population of HomeLink students. They are our parent-student partnership program that we offer. They utilize our facilities and we work in partnership with the families. They are our Deer Park students that we continue to serve and build that partnership with. And then another priority, the next priority was looking at continuing to look at the high school ball fields and the athletics and then the Deer Park Middle School renovation. So those are the priorities that the Facilities Advisory Committee shared with the board back in January. So then we had to decide what do we do with these priorities? How much do they cost? What does that look like? So we did talk about that. Part of the responsibility of the Facilities Advisory Committee was to look at and analyze assessed value, tax rates, look at them over time and what that looks like. So at the top in the beige color, you see the bond rate over time. So back in 2015, taxpayers were paying about $3.18 for that bond because when we go out for a bond, we're asking for a specific dollar amount so that it is like that crystal ball. What is that tax rate going to be? But we asked for that rate. Same thing with the levy, which is in the dark green. Back in 2015, it was $2.52. So we were asking taxpayers, and this is just for school taxes. This does not include state tax or any other tax. Those monies don't come to us. It's just for the tax-approved bond and levy rates that come to us. So back then it was $5.70 for the EPNO, which is the levies for learning and then the bond. Currently, because of the number of folks sharing that same cost for the bond and the levy, you can see in 2023, we're down to three or four, $1.70 for that same bond and $1.34 for a levy. So it's actually with the growth, but the school tax rates has decreased over time significantly. So $3.04 is where we're at currently. We're projected in 2024 for the same bond and same levy that was approved at $2.94, even though back in 2015, it was $5.70. It's very complicated, the tax structure and assessed value and inflation, all of the things and learning as I go. But you can see that for the school bond and levy, it's actually decreased over time. Fascinating, I think.
Alexa, if the, the bond that you're proposing passes next, next year, will that stay the same? Will it go up again a little bit?
I'll show you. I'll show you. So the board has not yet decided exactly where they want to go, but they have some options and that's why we're presenting the information that we have with the community to get the community's feedback. So they have some options and I'll share those with you.
Yeah, thank you.
So just to be clear, EPNO is the levy and that is for learning. So the state, as much as they would like to say fully funds education, what they do not fully fund is high school, college, and the classroom, STEM courses, K-8 class size reduction, some additional salaries and benefits for staff, additional textbooks, teaching supplies and materials, technology, transportation, athletics, music programs, drama programs, our resource deputies, just building, maintenance, and upkeep, our security cameras, cleaning supplies, basic electricity, gas, water, phone services, internet, and insurance for the district. So these all come out of our local funds. This is what is paid for by what we call the levy. It's called EPNO. And at the, at the state level, if we do not ask our taxpayers for $1.50 for that at EPNO, then we leave state match on the table. So.
It's educational programs and operations. It used to be maintenance and operations, a lot of these M&amp;Os back in the time. And so about five years ago, the, the state said, well, we're going to base it from the McClary decision. They said, we're going to fund state education, basic education. Great, but we're going to take your, take money away from everybody and then we're going to bring it back to you. So instead of us being able to have, you can't see on here, but our levies used to be like $2.50, $2.75, $3, whatever, state said, you can't do that anymore. Well, we could, but we choose here, our board's cheap. She says fiscally responsible. It's pretty cheap. I don't want to pay them more taxes than we have to. And so we've tried to keep it at $1.50 because at $1.50, we get state match at $1.50. If we go below $1.50, we don't get that dollar. You'd think they would just say, hey, we're going to give you $1.50 per kid, right? Or $1.50 per thousand, whatever it is. And that's not how it works. If we don't, if we don't collect $1.50 from the local community, the state doesn't match us as that. So we actually leave educational monies on the table. So it kind of, it really irks me.
Which in a direct way, we're already paying for, right?
And we're, we're doing, we, our boards also.
That is, we've.
Oh, sorry. Go ahead.
Okay. So. Bond is for buildings. That's why we're making sure that we delineate the difference between bond and levy. So project cost analysis, the next slide really just outlines the cost from the transportation facility, new, so the building of a new elementary school. If we renovate the current Arcadia and renovate it for the HomeLink program, so which means we renovate it, we are eligible for $9 million of state match. So our goal would, goal would be to put in about $4 million of local funds and then we're eligible for $9 million of state match because it's that old. We've done a great job of maintaining it and keeping it up. We're just simply out of space, but then we can renovate it for HomeLink. We can look at the middle school renovation project. So the whole part of the middle school is also eligible for state match at $9 million in, I believe, 2027. And then the last piece was the Deer Park High School ball field improvements. Like Eric said, they've been super fiscally responsible. So we're going to use our current funds that we have already accumulated and saved over time to do the girls softball field and look at the bleachers and press courts. So those will not come out of additional taxpayer dollars. Okay? So we had bond projections that you can see that were presented to us back in about May when we did the first community forum. These have since changed. So what we initially did is we took these projections. What if we keep the tax rate flat? If we keep the tax rate flat, we would essentially be able to do the elementary school and that's it. If we raise it, raised it just a little bit and at the time it was raised it to $2, which was 25 cents or so more than what we're currently paying, we could do the transportation center and the new elementary school, but we wouldn't be able to do all of the projects based on the priorities. If we raised it just a little bit, we would be able to do all of, all of the projects.
So to answer your question, Jason, we're looking at a little bit higher than what we currently are, but not what it was before, like 15 years ago. So we're, we're trying to hit that sweet So we're, we're trying to hit that sweet spot so that we can accomplish all these things, and we don't have to come back in two years, because it costs a lot of money to do that. We're trying to just make one, one shot at it.
The tax rate is a bit of a crystal ball, because now, based on August and new numbers, we could go for a $61.7 million bond, which would allow us to complete all of the projects for $2.15, as opposed to what we were given before at $2.25. So it's already come down because of our growth. Does that make sense? It's very hard to explain, but because of our growth for that same bond amount, it's less per individual tax dollar payer. So we're down to $2.15 for the same bond, just, and that was like two months' time. This highlights the land that we would be purchasing from the city and what would be going where. So from the new elementary school to the new transportation center, it would be in a location that would be more central to the city's safe, new infrastructure. And then as a part of the inter-local agreement, the school district will be building a new road. So a through road from East D Street up Aspen Road to connect with Crawford Street. So to.
If you've ever been in a traffic jam on Weber and whatever street Arcadia's on there in the morning in the elementary school, it would just go past the elementary school. So people wouldn't be coming back into that. Hopefully, it'd alleviate quite a bit of the thing, and the buses wouldn't be coming back into that system.
Jason, skipping over these, I just thought I would read the highlights from the community thought exchanges that we had. So we did the community thought exchange. From the first one from May, the summary said, we need to plan for the growth that is coming to Deer Park. We need more room, and I like the options they put together. Safety and security for students and staff is critical. There is little doubt that great schools enhance the quality of education and the value of everyone's home. And then they said, if you move HomeLink to Arcadia, it will add greater inconvenience to the traffic flow in the area where it's already miserable. So I was like, oh, well, that's an indicator to me that I need to make sure that I highlight that additional street that we'll be putting in. And then the second community forum, according to July, says, we support the third option to upgrade all facilities and provide the best education and safety for our kids. Maximize state matching funds. So if we do not look at the middle school, and if we do not look at renovating the other projects, the new Arcadia Elementary would be eligible for $2 million, $1 million of state match. Renovating Arcadia would be eligible for $9 million of state match. And the middle school renovation from the old part of the middle school is also eligible for $9 million of state match. If we did not complete those options, we would be leaving $18 million of state match on the table. So I think that's why people said go with the third option, do all of them. I kind of take over that part, so, for time. Clayton will not be impacted or affected. That will be remaining the same. That was a question that came up. People had questions about the HomeLink program, so we were able to just answer. HomeLink students are our Deer Park students. They are a part of our community, and it's a, they access enrichment classes through Deer Park School District. How much time do I have? Am I out of time? Five minutes?
That's it.
That's it? Okay, I'm going to go quickly. So then we were able to work with our architectural firms to provide some conceptual renderings. This one happens to be of what the HomeLink family would look like at the new Arcadia, because people were saying, well, what would the new Arcadia, what could it look like, and how could it serve our families? So these are fresh and hot off the press. This is what it could potentially look like for our HomeLink families. A big difference from the current Arcadia, right? For those of you who are on Arcadia. And then, let's see, conceptual rendering on the new elementary school. So we got those from the architect as well, as we're looking at future planning. It would go on the new, new site. And then this just has pictures of our current transportation center. It's very dilapidated, and they need a new home. And our bus drivers were carred, and they drive in all-weather conditions. So I don't know if anybody's been up there. Okay, I think that is about it. Are there any questions?
Counsel? Yes, sir. Do you? Kids, you guys have any questions? No?
I guess I would say, if you would like to provide us feedback or to see what the community has.
I saw the word ECAP on your screen, so I was curious if you could just give a little tidbit about what you would do with our early learning program.
Thank you. Good question, Amber. So ECAP is currently housed in portable across the street from Arcadia to Deer Park Elementary Building. Once we move second grade into the new elementary school, we will be able to bring in ECAP and hopefully expand our preschool program, because we will have that space now at Deer Park Elementary to be able to move them in. So it will become a pre-K through first grade school, and then we can expand the pre-K options.
Then hopefully, our IT department can maybe move into where they, the ECAP currently is, and they can actually work.
All with us.
Yeah.
If the Deer Park District office. So, yep, that's ECAP, and that's our hope to be able to expand. There is research that early learning is important and helps control, or the younger that have access to the learning. Thank you. Great question.
Thank you both.
Thank you. Thanks for your time and for listening.
Thank you very much for, would be willing to sell us the, the ground to put the schools on, because that, that will allow us to actually do this.
And this is for the community, it's on our website, too. If you would like to get in and join this through Thought Exchange, you can see what others have shared, and you can put in your own thoughts and vote on other thoughts as well. It's open until the 18th or 20th.
It's up one of those.
One of those two. It's still open for you to get in. Thank you.
You're welcome. Next up, item B, City of Deer Park Golf Course Lease, 2023, One Stroke Incorporated. City Attorney Chuck, would you be still listening?
Sure. Let me just give you a brief explanation of this by way of history. Looking around at the council, I think Dee was on the council at the time. Roger, of course, was here. Back in, I think it was 2010 or 2011, the city purchased the Deer Park Country Club Golf Course at an auction. It was probably one of the best things to happen to the community, because anybody could have bought it at that auction. And the city paid $800,000. The dirt will never be less than that. So just, just, I mean, it's a great investment, not that that's what it was for, but you bought a park at the auction. And ever since that time, the city has been in a, in a very positive landlord-tenant relationship with Craig Chu, Craig's here, and his company, One Stroke Inc. Craig had a lot of familiarity with the course, because he was involved with the course from almost day one, if not day one, when it was under the prior ownership. Anyway, the city was able to enter into lease negotiations with Craig and come up with a deal that worked and, and has worked. We've modified it, you know, a little bit over time to make sure that it's fair for Craig and, and fair for the city. So fast forward to where we are now, for a reason that we'll discuss, that Roger and I'll touch on here in a few minutes. It's time to enter into a new lease. The, the primary reason is because of the water situation. Dee might remember this. I don't know if it's come up before. I think Tim's aware of this as well. The developer that put in the Deer Park Country Club development and the golf course and things spent an enormous amount of money putting in a water system out there. And so in exchange for that, the city entered into an agreement whereby a certain amount of water would be delivered every year for free, essentially. And that amount of water has, over time, been used to where there's probably about a year left on that. Okay? And so that's never been an impact to Craig. He has to pay the overage over the amount that we had in the lease, but the overage payment's a fraction of what you would pay if you had to pay for all of it. For example, and it's about 60 million gallons are used, and that's the amount that's in the lease that's before you in Section 13. And any, the reason we picked 60 million is that's a pretty fair estimate of about how much it's going to take to, to water the course. You're never going to get away with using less than that. We want to make sure that we promote conservation, but at the same time, we don't want to make it too low, so that you've got a brown golf course and then, you know, into a big expense. So anything over that's going to be paid for, and that's the way the, the existing agreement is as well. So that's a pretty big change, because that's going to result in about a $47,000 charge to the city by the city's water department, because the city's water department is an enterprise fund. And so you're going to have to use your park budget to pay that $47,000. I'd love to be able to tell you, and I know Craig would too, that we could just throw it in and make the golf course pay it, but it won't pencil out, you know? The rest of the terms of the agreement are very similar to what you have right now. Craig pays, his company pays $15,000 a year. It doesn't seem like a lot, but most public golf courses, which this is, it's not a private golf course, most public golf courses lose money. They're a lot like swimming pools that you were talking about earlier. But it's something, you know, for people to do. It's an amenity. And, and I said, it is indicated it's a park. So the agreement is for, pursuant to Section 3, which is on the first page, it's going to be a 10-year agreement from beginning November 1 through October 31, and it's going to end up replacing the existing agreement that's in place that hasn't run out yet. But because of that water situation, we need to get ahead of it and get this in place. I will tell you that the document that's in your council packet, we worked pretty hard to get this done in a really compressed period of time, because when we started looking at council meetings and schedules, between my schedule, Roger's schedule, his leaving, and Craig's schedule, it turned out that today was the best way, day to do this. So you'll note that the, the date at the bottom of the lease, after we got all of it together, is August 10. My apologies, in 4.1, the, the year November 1 of 2033 needs to be changed to 32. Otherwise, Craig would be exercising the option after the lease expired. So it's supposed to be the year before. So we'll change those two things to 2032, so that he can give us the notice if they want to exercise the option. That's the only revision that, that we're suggesting beyond what's, what's already there. Craig and his wife have already signed, and it's not going to be an issue on this. The profit sharing is tweaked a little bit. That's in paragraph 6.2 in the lease. We added a CPI increase of the threshold amount, because historically, we had the, once you hit this amount, I think it was six and a quarter back at the time, I think that's what it was, at six and a quarter, once you get to $625,000, then the city got 20% of everything over that. Well, with inflation, then the city was getting a bigger share than, you know, what was anticipated. So we're going to move that to 675,000 and then annually move it up. And so some years, you'll get money, and some years, you may not. So it's, it's been good, though, from, from that perspective. Paragraph 13, again, is the irrigation water situation. Paragraph 20 is an assignment provision. The city will not unreasonably withhold assignment, because at, at some point, Craig might want to retire, and so he may find someone, we hope, that has the same goals and aspirations that you, the council, have, and he has, as a steward for that golf course, and somebody that wants to come and live in this community and, and take over that operation. And so we're hoping that that will happen during the timeframe of the 10-year with the five-year option, and so that gives him something that he can, you know, talk to folks about. We do have an early termination provision in paragraph 23 that works both ways. It's for either party. I'm not sure why we would want to terminate, but because that's what Craig wanted, we wanted to make it fair to both sides. So it's there. Either party can terminate on one and a half years' notice to the other party. So even though it's 10 years and five-year option, you know, it's just, it can be done if you want it to be done. I think that, I can't say enough, I mean, I'm, I wish I was a good golfer. I'm not. I'm a hack, but I do golf a little bit. I've been fortunate enough to play your course a few times, and for a community of this size, you guys are very, very fortunate to have something like that, that you can offer to your citizens by way of recreation. I think it's, it's working well. I hope that this is something that you're willing to accept, and it's been reviewed by, like I said, Craig, his lawyer, Roger, Tim, and I. So happy to answer any questions that you might have about it.
I don't have any questions, but I am so pleased about how it's operated. He's a fantastic steward. He really is, and I hope everybody agrees with me that we should go with this.
Yeah, I guess I should ask, Craig, you don't have a problem with changing that option date, right? Because, sorry.
I might want to add is, you know, I mean, I do pay the $15,000, but the, like last year, the percentage over the 625, I think I paid the city another, I think it was $48 or $50,000.
It was, it was almost enough to cut, it'd be about the same as the water.
Yeah, and basically, this year, the way things are going, you guys should be very happy, because it's going to be more than that. So it's, it's been a great year. One reason it's more is, of course, inflation went up, so I raised the, raised the rate, so you guys are going to be getting more money, plus it's been very busy. And so, anyway, just trying to get things going.
Two questions, and maybe is it Roger? The water cost, what's the cost basis? Are, are we paying the same as, like, the retail homeowner? Is this, is this like a wholesale rate or a cost rate?
The rates, because we only have the one rate set by ordinance or set by resolution, basically. So that will, that rate will be the same rate as if it's any other park, the school district, any large water user, they pay the same rate as you or I, as a resident does. It's a base rate plus so much for a thousand after that.
You, you can manipulate the rate a little bit, but you got to be careful, because you have to treat light customers alike. So if you give yourself a break, then I'm pretty sure the school district will want a break on their stuff, too.
Sure.
And so will other people that have, you know.
I would say the GI.
Yeah. And so strictly from as a, as a water utility, it's, everyone pays the same rate for that water. The higher users, obviously, have a higher percentage they pay based on the, the cost for a thousand, the overage rate.
Sure. And then, Craig, I had a question for you, sir. About how many people play golf every year?
This year, there'll probably be 35,000 to 40,000 rounds played.
So this is arguably one of our most busy parks.
Yeah, it's, and to be honest, ever since COVID hit, golf has just gone crazy. I mean, there's so many new players, kids. I mean, we had 60-some kids in our junior camp. Just, it's just kind of exploded. And, you know, the golf course up there, like the putting and chipping green, get people out there using it all the time, that's free. You need clubs, balls, whatever, just gunseas, handle that. But it's just a great place for people to go and community, nice community up there. Just a lot of fun.
And, and then one last question, Roger, I, and I'm sorry, I didn't remember this, but we were talking at one point about using some of the wastewater purified to water that. Is that at all in the?
Well.
Can't remember off the top of my head where we're at with that.
Something that should happen, and it could happen, depend upon, really, its funding scenarios. Basically, for us to do it, we've done the evaluation that met state law requirements a few years ago that showed that for, you know, probably 15 to 20 million dollars, improvements can be made to our wastewater system where we could pick off, the goal is picking off half the water usage that was going to the golf course. So say 35 million gallons, just for a round number. And then only having to provide 35 million gallons of fresh water to them as a, as a mixing system, so say 70 million gallons total. So that's less that we have to pump out of the office for, for residential customers or helps with growth, whichever way you want to look at it, for more residential customers. And so it, it's a thing that could happen. In the state of Washington, the treatment level basically takes it to a Class A standard that it's potable water, but you still put in purple pipes, you still don't use it for that. But it's treated to the level that you could go to there. That's not only probably improvements at our upper storage lagoon for the infrastructure, but it's probably storage cells, probably at the golf course to make bigger water holes, to bigger water features to store water for this use of the golf course. So yes, it's all possible. It's, it's a, it's a cost challenge for that from the ratepayer standpoint or from grant eligibility standpoint. We tried to get a couple pilot programs and apply for those dollars, we weren't successful that way. Because in Washington, they really haven't taken off yet. I mean, it's going to happen like it does in California, Oregon, Nevada, and Arizona, everywhere else, but Washington's a little behind accepting. But Washington's a little behind accepting that concept, but we'll get there.
Make a motion to approve the lease.
No, say it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Craig.
Thank you.
Item C, cooperation agreement for community development block grant funds.
Yes, I was going to try and find this earlier and it's in here. Basically, we have been pretty successful with community development block grant funds for years. Primarily use them for water-related projects because when the block grant board does their, let's say every five years or four years plan, water infrastructure, sewer infrastructure, things like that are high on the priority list. Thank you. Not much else exists, but those are high forces. And so we are part of a consortium of several small towns. Basically, the city of Spokane and Spokane Valley are the two that are out of the consortium. Everybody else from the standpoint of towns, the county, et cetera, are in this. And so this is our, our agreement that we have to say, yep, we want to be a part of that. So we have that, really, so we have that funding source out there. Of course, there's rules and steps and hurdles and all that kind of stuff to use our dollars. But it's been a very valuable tool for us. So absent it, we no longer have the block grant funds to ask for dollars.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion in a second. Any comments or questions about the council? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion can. Item D, change order number two, irrigation lagoon replacement project, poll reconstruction. Roger?
So on the second page of this change order, you have the items that are on the list. You know, as things come and go, there's actually some savings here where they're giving us money back. But in the end, it always seems like there's more costs than there is money back. But it's removing some concrete. We found, as we're doing part of the electrical work, for example, some of the old headworks, part of the original sewer infrastructure was in the ground and found and now in the way of conduits. So that had to be dug up and cut out of there and we weren't aware of it in the original project planning. We've been fighting about, there's a certain kind of valve in the wastewater world that has to be, in the United States now, has to be made in America. Well, some of the valve parts aren't made in America. These certain types of valves in the wastewater world that we're trying to get. So we had to deal with that and change the valve types. That was actually a credit, but in places where we could use them, but it wasn't always the case. We had some electrical rack items and in there you'll see reclassification of the building. The L and I, when it came to the issue of the electrical permit, required us to change the class of the building from one to the other, which, oh, by the way, that adds more cost to it all the time because of our electrical permit. So it's things beyond our control that we even had to try and solve with this. But the net effect of all of these, plus sales tax and all that kind of stuff, is they were $1,000 or change order for number two. We're still under a pretty good percentage relative to almost a $600,000 project. But we need your approval on this.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any comments or questions about the council? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Item H, authorization for contract amendment, task order 2023-02, storage lagoon compliance, G B, Canadian Incorporated. Roger?
So the original task order was at the start of the year, and this is all comes from Division of Dam Safety, Department of Ecology, Division of Dam Safety's rule changes relative to wastewater storage lagoons in our case that are identified as a dam, like a dam on the rivers, I think. And so we had this series of analysis we had to do. And lo and behold, you get a task order put together, you get a ecology's blessing, you get the first draft done, you go back and you find out, oh, no, there's some other things they have to have us do to satisfy some other person's decision or rule on that. And that's what the case is here. Both these two items, earthquake stability analysis and the freeboard analysis were added to after the first review. And so that made our engineers have to go back and run some more modeling as relative to potential breach factors at our storage lagoons up above. The hard part about this is we just finished those lagoons about three years ago and it wasn't an issue at all during that time. But these are the kind of things that came up, since the rules have changed. So this is an extra cost to us in the term of about $16,900 to take care of the ecology really required parts of this analysis.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any comments or questions about the council? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion can. Next up, item G, swing your fence discussion. We will start with the council first, I mean, with the audience. D, what's your two cents on that? Nothing? Jason?
I know we've talked about this over the years. Talked about a chain link fence or boulders, that sort of thing. I, for my part, I'm vehemently opposed to chain link fence. I don't want a swing your to look like a minimum security facility. Boulders, I talked to Brad a couple weeks ago. He said they're very expensive. I wish we didn't have to have this discussion at all, to be honest. If we are going to do a fence of some kind, I was wondering, I've got, I've got my own show and tell. I, I was trying to find something that I thought would, would actually enhance the look of the park rather than detract and be an eyesore. So if the goal is to keep cars out, then I didn't know if something like, you know, like a post, you guys can't see that very well, but like a post and chain kind of idea. I have no idea what anything like this would cost. But that's the only, that's the only kind of fence I saw that I thought, you know, that'd keep cars out. It doesn't look like there are going to be incarcerated folks coming in and out. And it might actually make the park look cute, too.
I have to agree with you, rather than the boulders, because children tend to climb on boulders and there's a chance that they could be hurt doing so. So I would personally prefer something like that.
My kids like boulders. They could probably go either way, but.
Oh, I have, so do I.
Yeah.
As a city, we have to cut our liabilities, but much as we can.
Anyway, those are my thoughts, sir.
I have to agree with Jason. Something a little bit shorter that still is effective without taking away from it being a park.
Kim?
Yeah, very opposed to chain fence, taller fence. The post and chain is okay. I like the look of boulders. I like that the kids could climb on them and jump off of them. I think that would be a plus. It would certainly enhance the overall features of the park. Set, you know, 10 feet in off the road would be dangerous because it's pretty soft grass. So that would be helpful. I think we need to, if we're going to do a project like this, we need to make sure we do the other pieces that have been suggested, the pool. Yeah, moving the fence around the waiting pool, the benches, the shade. And then in particular, I think it's really important if we could add the sidewalk from the pool to the parking lot, that accessibility piece for somebody trying to come in, either if they're unstable walking or if they're in a wheelchair or walker, they have the ability to enjoy the pool if they can get to it. So I would say as part of our budget discussion this fall, we should authorize some funds, but we should do a bunch of things. Those are all things that we could do at once and would be helpful. So I'd be happy with that. The chain and posts, I like the boulders better, but if there's a big cost difference, the chain post does look, does look good.
Could we investigate the cost, Mr. Man?
Let me, let me add my two cents. We could limit that to half the park. Go from east end all the way to the skate park. Leave the old RV park open. Because there is no playground equipment there. So that'd be a cost savings, just to thought. But Brad, can you scope on this? I think it's kind of a.
Just to put my two cents in, too, there's other things we have to have. One thing we need to get the park surveyed to figure out where the setbacks are the right of way. So we don't put anything in the street right of way. And the other thing that we'd have to look at is the sprinkler system. If you put rocks in, depending on where the sprinkler heads are, you know, they won't spray through the rocks. For the chain and post like you're talking about, it really wouldn't affect that. But if you plunk a four-foot rock on the ground and the sprinkler head goes to go around and it just sprays directly into the rock, it's not spraying on the grass behind it. So there would be, any way you want about it, there would be a massive sprinkler rebuild to do that.
Yeah.
But where the chain and, and chain and fence can be a problem with that too. But the chain and post like you're talking about really wouldn't affect the sprinklers at all.
You know, I think, you know, budget season's coming up and so, you know, probably round numbers, by the time you put all this stuff together as a bigger project with a fence and concrete and play structures and all that kind of stuff, it's probably something you're going to have to vet out anyway. So, but Brad should be able to get some round numbers for budget season to at least give you some ideas or some targets or some amounts you're going to have to allocate and then go through a process of getting it out and all that kind of stuff. But it's, it's all doable, but yeah, as a package, but.
Any comments from the audience?
Did you decide not to move the skate park at all then? Is the skate park going to stay in the park?
Right now it is. Where did you get that discussion from?
I just was curious. So you can't move it up to the sports complex because there's no water, right? Well, give me a second. Straighten me out.
So I don't.
We would have to have regular bathrooms.
Well, there's more of a problem than that. I mean, if the skate park was to move, there's going to be an infrastructure cost relative to restaurants. But really what's going to happen is the structure, the things that we have there now are probably pretty close to a useful life of even applying new skate-like material the next time. I mean, Brad could more attest to that. And so if you decide that you don't want the skate park as swing your park, you really need to talk about a different kind of skate park. Concrete, low ground, whatever else. It's not as simple as just moving that facility to another asphalt area. So, you know, obviously the skate park ramps is sunk into the asphalt. We knew that was going to happen. It was all part of the system when we bought it. But just to be aware of that, it's a, it's a big picture thing. And if you decided to make that jump, it's kind of like the planning we did for the splash pad that we're not doing. You know, it takes some time and effort to figure out where it could fit up there, where the vehicle's going to go, that they're going to be there, what parking area you may have to improve, et cetera, et cetera. Thankfully, you kept some of the ground, units, all that ground near the sports complex to the school district. There's some room there. There's not infrastructure there, there's no sewer there, there's things like that. So it's a bigger picture item thing, discussion-wise, than the simplest, just moving it. So just keep that in mind as you go down that path.
Did that answer your question?
Yes.
Can I say something? I've talked to quite a few of the children that do use the skate park and kind of talked to them about the idea of moving it up to the sports complex and stuff. They actually prefer to keep it where it is. And I know a lot of homeowners like.
Right now we're talking about swing your fence.
Yeah, the fence, I'm fine with, whether it's Jason's idea, which I really like.
I like that, too.
I think that's an excellent idea. It's both visually good and it will be, it will help keep traffic, you know, the cars out of the middle of the park. I think that's an excellent idea. I would like to see that myself because last time my car went through there, they almost hit a seven or eight-year-old young girl, missed her by about two feet when they were going at 30, around 30 miles an hour across the park.
So Brad, would you do your homework?
Yep. So the only thing I would tell you, just out of my experience with parks and cars and things going through areas where children are, you definitely want to look into things that if you're really trying to stop cars, that are going to stop a car. A lot of the decorative type fences, those chains, if a car's going 30 miles an hour, it's going to bust right through that chain anyway. It's not going to be beneficial what you're trying to do. So I just caution you on your ideas. If it's, since I've been up here, I know it's only been two months. I've dealt with dirt bikes and things like that in the park, but not a car. But if it's somebody who's running or fleeing through there and they're trying to go through, I understand boulders are a bigger pain, but they're more likely to stop a car than a chain is. If that person's recklessly driving, if it's just people driving into the park, yes, that stops them from doing it. But if somebody reckless driving or fleeing, drunk, whatever it may be, a chain is not going to stop the car. It's going to snap, car's going to go to the park. So just from my experience, I would just tell you, if that's what your goal is or that's what the problem has been in the past, you might want to keep that in mind with your bidding out of stuff or ideas.
Thanks, man. Okay. You good on that? Richie?
One other idea I was going to suggest is rather than doing like the chain and posts, is just placing bollards or, you know, like the concrete posts or steel posts that are often used in front of like storefronts. Those are designed to stop cars. And you wouldn't need to have the chains going across that. The, my mother used to be in a wheelchair and trying to get her into the parks. Whenever there's a fence or a chain, it makes it very difficult to get someone into the park. So I do also like Caleb's suggestion about having sidewalks because going and getting someone into a park without a sidewalk is very difficult in a wheelchair. Additionally, if you wanted to sidewalks, having some sidewalks in mixed park for a settler's day would be wonderful for people who are handicapped. But for just on the fence subject, may consider just doing bollards to keep cars out.
Anyone else? Moving on, number H, Christmas lights discussion. Jennifer, you want to start it?
We need them.
I make a motion.
We're just trying to ramp it up with all the economic developments. It's just a small way to get started. But our Christmas tree lighting is really, it needs some help. We put a lot, we put more money into what we're asking for than we, we put more money in fireworks. And I just think this will last a lot longer and it's.
Well, yeah, I can see Christmas planning is the first Saturday in December runs all the way through to winter.
Right. Yeah.
So the only problem I have, and Brad will coincide with me, is we're not digging the ground and putting conduit in.
No, I don't think that was in his plan, was it?
Casey was, yeah.
Yeah.
So anyway, Brad, you want to put your two cents on this?
Well, when Casey originally came to me, he was talking more and all over the yard and putting conduit everywhere around every tree and this and that. And then in the end, it was just, we were just going to run one conduit under the sidewalk. Doesn't hurt anything. And then they were going to run it down the ramp, you know, the ceiling, which would be great for us because we don't have to, you know, doing that would be a great deal because we don't have to run that, those big extension cords overhead. It'd be nice to have that run down there to the ground.
I think that's what we ended up with.
Yes.
Yeah, I think that's Indian, that's what Casey had told, had told me that he had looked into having done. And all we had to do was get the conduit under the sidewalk, which that's.
Casey, he does some pretty big projects, so I can imagine him saying things like that. But no, we're going to keep it simple.
So my question to you, are we looking for this year or next year? We can put a budget next year?
I don't think we can get it done this year, can we?
I don't know what his scope, what his idea is at this point, so.
He wants to get it done this year.
Yeah. If we can do it, that'd be great.
Can I ask, is this just Christmas lights around the city hall or around the downtown area of your park?
City hall, the trees.
For the Christmas lighting and whatnot.
Yes. Your question?
And the ask was about $10,000, is that?
And that's per year to keep going forward with it.
I like that part because it relieves our city employees from doing that in case there is snow.
And this, yeah.
And this.
Point was.
What?
May I ask one more?
Yeah.
Billy, are you, are you sure he wanted to shoot for this year?
Yeah.
He did.
Does he need us to approve tonight?
Yeah, I mean, we need a ball roll and it's going to take some time, you know, come the fall.
Yeah, it's almost September.
I wish he would have answered. He kind of told me he had.
He kind of told me he had, he had people lined up to, to do what he had done. I mean, we can make a motion to make it available.
That's okay. Better to do our work.
Do you like the idea?
Yeah, yeah, I do. Motion to approve.
I'll say it.
For...
$10,000? For the Christmas lights for this year?
Yes.
Yes.
Is that? That'll get you what you need?
Yes, yes.
Okay, I'll say it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next up, item nine, ordinances. Letter A, ordinance 2023, got 1017 and exing certain real property scope limits in habitat for humanity annexation area to city, to city pursuant to the petition method.
Well, this is first reading, so it's typically your ordinance process. It's, I believe you move it on to the next one, which is the hearing state. So I don't know if you want more than that or... This is the property south of current Parkway Auto and RV that we had the public formal, or public hearing on last council meeting. So now your normal steps through the ordinance process is three readings of that ordinance. So you can choose the second reading to move it to the third as well. But that's, that's gonna be your process. I'm not saying this is a, so you're bringing like that, bring it forward. So this is the first one.
I'm a second, do you need to wait?
Yes, that's normal process.
Well, may I? Should we make a motion to... Well, that'll...
I'm just gonna throw out that this is kind of an anomaly on the three reading situation. Because you've already been through the process. So all it is, is just punting this for 45 days until it gets approved.
Was there, was there any objections to, to this at all at any of the hearings?
At your hearing, the last one, no. There were some ladies talking about the roadway, why the road wasn't a part of it. But as you recall, we kept that out specifically because of the state of it. And it's really not benefiting any residents or taxpayers, city residents or taxpayers. And so that's out of the annexation description. So the road's specifically out. But that was really the only problem that was centered on, about some growth things.
Can we just waive the three reading?
You have to make, you make a motion first to waive the three meetings, then Brad gets approved or disapproved, and then we go back to the original.
Okay, so I would make a motion to waive the three reading process.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good job.
I make a motion for ordinance 2023 dash zero, or 1017, annexing the certain real property scope which inhabits a humanity annexation area pursuant to the petition method.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion okay. There you go, Mark. Okay, consent agenda, number 10, approval of voucher claim check numbers.
It's just a sort of reason where there's gonna be a survey added instead of the existing exhibit B, which is kind of hard to read because this gets recorded.
Yeah, and they won't record it. So they won't raise that from their survey or, it'll happen instantly, but...
So we'll just put the actual exhibit on there. Thanks. You're good?
I just have 45 days waiting for that.
Sorry.
All right, item 10, consent agenda. Letter A, approval of voucher claim check numbers 41340 through 41378 in the amount of $779,981.06 for the first half of August of 2023. Item B, short flat request, 2023 dash two, Old Meadows. And item C, Deer Park Airport lease agreement, Harddeck Hangers LLC.
Motion to approve.
Motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, item 10, reported departments. Clint, you, you got anything to report?
Nothing super new or exciting. Just keeping water, it's super flowing, keeping up with everything that pertains to those two areas, operationally speaking. That's, that's all I got for you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you.
Jake, you're up.
Well, we've been super busy with permit processing. We haven't been so busy with then going forward with an exit that's going vertical. So I'm not sure what's going on there, but today we just had another 15 permits submitted forward. So a lot of building coming, just not sure when. But also, I think there was a question last night, I had to leave. But my new permitting system is up and running. We do have the portal open now, so we're having our contractors submit online. And that is working beautifully. And then I'm going out also with my inspection, my tablet that I got, I'm able to put any discrepancies I have right online and email it to them immediately. And the feedback from the contractors are just loving that. They love the mail, the email in their inspections, emailing all their packets, and just streamlines the process, which was the goal. So it's working, working great. And anybody can go on there if they want, they have an address they can type in. So we're using the mapping system as well. So every parcel will be able to track all the permits it's had or code enforcement it's had with every parcel in the city as well.
Thank you. Bradley?
We're gonna get going this next week on the new playground equipment. I finally got verification that they're producing the fall protection mark again. They had run out and weren't making any. So they're supposed to deliver that to us the first week of September. That was tentative, but we're gonna get started getting it put up. So it's all there. And the seventh of September, we're gonna get started with our yearly pavement preservation. We got, we had that meeting and they're all scheduled to get going.
Thank you. Daryl?
We are up to eight firefighting aircraft, right? And two more on the way. There's been a bit of a change this year in firefighting. And Roger can maybe correct me if I'm wrong, but the state has given local jurisdictions the ability to call out for air support rather than go through DNR, Forest Service, the respective groups. And from my experience, just seeing the airplanes going in and out, it seems like they're keeping the fires smaller in size. They're hitting on them quicker, getting them put out a little quicker. It also seems like they're putting a lot more resources on them sooner rather than allowing them to get bigger. I'm not sure the same thing's going on in Idaho. You see some of the fires, Hayden, they're, they're, they're a little bigger than, than what we've seen in R. I did meet with Mr. Chris Niemann last week with, he is the CEO of Aeroflight, which is based in Spokane, at Spokane International right now. He is asking us to provide a proposal to put in a portion of their facility at Deer Park. They're looking at a 36,000 square foot hangar. And this is actually the smallest portion of their business. It's their CL-415 twin-engine scoopers. In the future, he's planning to add some fire bosses to their fleet. For now, he's looking at keeping his RJ's large tanker jets at international. Although he was asking me some questions about the growth at the airport and whether they could handle that, whether it could handle that kind of aircraft. So I'll be asking to meet with you, probably this next week, Tim and probably Roger, to talk about, you know, what we need to do or what we can do to see if they can come in.
See if we can attract them. Roger?
Just a couple of project-related things. The, the sewer project, the airport is progressing well. They're at their last, this far south end, so that's the last of the infrastructure they have to put in. And we have about 10 customers out there that are now connected to sewer that haven't paid their connection fees. And probably at the end of the month, or we're giving them until the end of the project, then we may have to go out and actually shut waters off because they are actually using the system now. They're a little slow and Daryl keeps bugging them about making sure they get in. They're required to pay their connection fee. The project dollars are paying the actual work the contractors are doing out in the field. But that connection charge, we can't use EDA funds for that. And so the building owners, the, the customers are required to pay that. So that's coming up and he keeps warning them. And hopefully they'll get in and pay their connection fee, so they don't have to go through that process. And then on the lagoon project, the liners completed, the sand cover was finished today. Next comes the salt rock and then piping and so forth. So that one's moving along. They're, they're under a bit of a crunch. The, the timing issue they really have is the removal of the biosols from the current lagoon and the farmer disposal location. That has to happen in around the middle of September at the latest. So they're pushing hard as they can. I would love to tell you that it'll be done this year, but they're not these big projects. That may not be the case, but they're trying. So things are going along, they're good. Subdivision-wise, two more are getting close to their final plat stages. It will be coming to you. I know they're trying to get done before the end of September. Marshall Meadows, which is across the street from the Brayshaw Lagoons on Sixth Street. And then there's a plat, it's Gimmel-Evans Plat, it's up by F Street. It's only 12 lots, but, and then all of these, Dalton Creek is working on their park area down below. So those pictures that the superintendent showed you, there's, there's real subdivisions and, and homes being put there. And we probably have 500-ish lots in the next, this year and next year that'll be planted into the city. So there's growth happening here for sure.
She showed a picture about Kootenay?
That's a, that's a county plat. I think that's the 10-acre parcels north of the airport, I believe. I'm not sure if that's something, but that's all I know that's that size.
Thank you. Billy, do you have anything from the chairman you'd like to add?
No, I mean, we, we all go for Night Out Against Crime on September 19th. We're gonna do that, Pizza, Stone King Pizza, Sheriff Knowles is confirmed, and some other law enforcement agencies. So we'll be out, call it around six or seven. Look at our Facebook page on Friday, we'll make a big announcement on it, so...
Thank you. Item 11, reported consequences, comments, reports, Dee? Jason?
I have a few things. I know Mrs. Rampindall left, but to, to her, I guess, question, I don't know if it was really a question or a statement, but how many, what, in regards to the pool and lifeguards, I've, I've heard various things. How, how many applications did we get in the last couple of weeks?
The last couple of weeks?
Or I guess the last week or whenever we got two.
One was too young. He'll be good to go next year. And the other one, when we talked with her, she would, she works at the Hatch Road Pool.
And it was distinct.
And she wouldn't get off work until 2:15. And they're still say she gets up here and she's ready to work at 3:00. Let's just say that we close the pool at 5:00.
Right, just doesn't work.
So we, we technically didn't even get enough applications to fill the slots we needed to be in compliance.
No, thank you. I just wanted to make that a public awareness of, it's not like the city was holding up on you.
No, I mean, we just didn't, we just didn't get any applications.
Thank, thank you. Two other things, one in related to that, there, there is a water feature that does not require lifeguards. It's called a splash pad. And I was just wondering, and I'm not prepared to make a motion, just maybe consider, but maybe, maybe slowly saving up for, for something like that in the future. So, you know, potentially year marking, you know, a couple hundred thousand dollars over the next few years or something to, to build that into that. So don't need comment, pushback or anything, I'm just throwing that out there. And then the third thing is, and Diane touched on it just a little bit, but, you know, we've, we've talked about the athletic complex a lot over the last couple of years, what to do with it, what not to do with it. I mean, I know there's repairs, there's infrastructure things. We've talked, you know, heard in recent months about, you know, putting baseball fields out there or a bike park, or there's frisbee golf that's never been finished. And so my, my question was, should, should we do some sort of a, a, a planning committee that would, that would actually, you know, get together and, and do like a, sort of like what they did with the airport, but like a 10- or 15-year plan of, you know, now that, now that we know what the boundaries are for the, the school district potential purchase, maybe get together and talk about, you know, what, what do we want that to look like over the next 10 or 15 years so we can plan for that? So I, I didn't know if that would be something that we could put together. I'd be happy to be on it.
So the, the comprehensive plan that's going through an update process has a parcel in it.
Okay.
That had to be done as part of the grant application process for pools, splash pad, grant-funded things in the past. It's, it'll be part of the update process that's going through the planning commission now. Not that it's specific to, let's figure out what we can do with this park space, just more broad, all parks in general. So you could do that as part of that if you wanted them to look at that. We didn't plan for that necessarily. But for the other option, as you say, is, is develop a park, I think sports complex recreation committee, something like that, that has Liligue fields or adults, because the adult softball used to be a big deal. Maybe there, there's somebody that wants to be involved there or whatever. But that would be a separate task that what the planning commission would work on.
So then would, would you suggest maybe waiting until the planning commission is done with their piece and then it'll come back and be more specific?
I think you can have both go at the same time, really, to form a committee. Just know that there's, the park's plan will be updated through the comp plan. And it's mostly about acreage and the deducts that will happen from the school sale and some of those kinds of things. But it's not gonna look at how many Liligue fields you need or where the bike park should go or things like that. And so that's a separate group, but there'll be two plans going on, so... So what, you'll have to do it, you have to have things like that going to grant dollars. You have the plans in place.
Okay, is that something that we could, I don't know if you and I need to talk more?
That's another great budget topic to put in, and figure out there's some cash you need to put in to give Brad some ammunition for survey work or planning work or whatever. That's the time, perfect timing for it.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
Gil?
I had a couple of things. Start with, somebody pointed out to me two different things on our website that need to be updated. First, the pool is still open on our website. So that can be rather disappointing. Secondly, when somebody goes to it on a cell phone, there's no other pages that they can see. They can't access any of the other dropdown menus. They can just go to the home button and refresh the page over and over. So we, we need to check that out. And then coming back to the pool, it's you. I wore my towel, my swimsuit tonight, just to stand in solidarity, or sit in solidarity with our, our kids out there. Looking forward to that and being disappointed on that. A couple of questions, kind of like Jason had, to just clarify some things. Did we move our pay scale back down to where it had been previously, the minimum wage here? Or is it still at the higher rates that we approved a year or two ago?
It's at minimum wage.
Okay. Some of the pay is different for a second-year guard or if there's an assistant manager or the manager, they pay a little more. It, it, it's the same scale as the other pools are. Okay. So, I mean, several years ago, we quickly and easily fixed the lifeguard problem by simply paying them more.
It had $23 an hour.
Okay.
Which we did. It was $53,000 is what...
Right. But at the end of the day, it certainly seems to be very important to this community to have a pool and to keep it, and then to be able to use it. I do think we should thus get other options as well, of course. But one of the easiest fixes seems to be paying better than the other pools. And...
There's a lot of kids in this community. I mean, why can't they teach it at the high school or at the fire station? It's a Red Cross thing, you know, they take, I think, what is it? 30, 40 hours worth of class? I mean, it just seems like it's a no-brainer to me.
You, you have to have, to be Red Cross certified, you have to, there's actual in-pool training. So the very first thing they do is they have to pass the physical aspect of it. So it, it has to be the swimming facility. And the person that teaches it has to be a certified lifeguard who has then went on to get the certification to be a instructor, so...
So they could do something like that at the Hatch Pool and take their classroom time elsewhere, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I think the point is, maybe, maybe there's a smaller pool of lifeguards out there than there usually be. Maybe it's a little bit harder to get certified. But when it comes down to it, it's just a matter of priorities and decision-making. Any family that budgets, they have certain things that they enjoy doing and they spend a little electricity on because they enjoy it. As a city, we, we have prioritized a golf course because it not only provides an amenity, but it's great to go play on it. That's great. There are other things that we do as a city, fireworks, Christmas lights, that, that, just because it's our dollars and we like it. I don't think we need to feel bad if we choose as a community to spend something, to spend some money on something that we enjoy. We, of course, need to not be fruitless. Every government can easily get into trouble wasting people's tax dollars. We, of course, need to not be fruitless. Every government can easily get into trouble wasting people's tax dollars. But the overwhelming feeling, and there's never, not detractors, but the overwhelming sense that I get from the community is that this is a priority, and it comes down to kind of the where there's a will, there's a way. We can pay them more, we can have lifeguards that commit to the full season there, and there. But again, we, we also need to explore water features that don't, don't require lifeguards, so we have six months of water feature as well, so I'll just be done there.
We're just waiting on splash.
I just would be curious to see if, I know it's only two weeks left now, right, where it's very, it's very minimal time-wise. Though of course, homeschool kids would still enjoy the pool even in September. But I understand that's a different, that's a different thing. But it would be interesting to just see how many lifeguards would be willing to come work for our wage, and if we can't afford it and we want to.
I think we'll present that next year.
Yeah, I, I think that would be great.
Can I throw one thing in on that too?
Yeah.
So, some of our girls work at the Hatch Road Pool also. If you look on their website, they're closing this Saturday. They close up on the twentieth. The Spokane, city of Spokane pools close up on the twenty-seventh, and the reason they do that, they run out of lifeguards. Our pool of lifeguards now are young, high school, college age kids, and they go back to school. And that's what happened to us, and that's what happens to everybody. The only ones that really keep their kids year round is Y U C A. And I talked to their director today, and it's because they're from, open from five in the morning till ten at night. So, and it's indoor, it's all year round, so those kids continue to work there. But the outdoor pools, we just run out of lifeguards. The kids go back to school, you know, high school kids and college kids. You know, if we had adults that were lifeguards, that, you know, it's just, it's just a matter of you can pay them whatever you want, but if they have to go to college or to school, they have to go to school.
Can we get one of those big domes?
The big dome.
We're good?
Thirteen, fourteen million?
Yes.
Million year, million there. Now you're talking some more.
Make a motion?
Motion to approve.
Thank you.
Thank you all for coming.